Recording in progress. Hold to order the record meeting of the real hybrid meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please. Mayor Garance, here. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carter, here. Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall? Oh, excuse me. City Manager Noff?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor?
Yeah.
Finance Director Dillingham? Community Development Director Caldwell?
Here.
Water, Road基Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Wastewater Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
Management Analyst Sandborn? Thank you. Thank you. Please stand for the public allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. There is nothing to report out of this session. Public presentation. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on its agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Lum Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regularly agenda with consideration for the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who would? Would either of you like to make a public comment? Now, are there any hand raised? Any emails? There are emails that we see. Then we will close public presentations and move on to the consent calendar. Any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Anyone in the public wish to remove an item? Any hand raised or emails? And I will call for motion to approve the consent calendar. We have a motion, is there a second? A second. You have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries four zero. Yeah. Now we will move on to the city manager's report and update.
I'll try and end Mayor Garance with your permission. So there is no written staff report for this week. The council's aware the city manager was out though last week and was unable to put that together and certainly apologize for that. But this is a good opportunity also to ask the questions of staff that the council may have. So it wasn't just the city manager, but we've also had some council members and staff members who have become ill. And so we are wishing for everybody's speedy recovery. Coming up before the council will be the city's audit report on April 19th. And as the council will recall, the 19th is also our Proposition 218 rape hearing date. So the 19th will be an important date for the city and city council. And then I'm also very excited to let the council know that our paved, a patch paved project is expected to start around the 21st, 22nd. They're finishing up the contractor's number. They're finishing up work in Arcata and it's planning on coming down sometime that week to begin the paved patch projects. You'll probably see Randy out over the next couple of days remarking some of those areas that need to be prepared. And so we're very excited about, about that. And at the end of this month, we will also be getting our bids back for the larger paved projects that the council has identified as their top priority. So, so good news coming up hopefully. And with that, I will go ahead and return to the mayor, see if there's any questions or comments with staff.
Thank you very much. The manager, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter? No questions, thank you. Even Congress Mayor Wilson?
No questions.
Right. Carter in hand raised? Any questions from the public? Any emails? Okay, we are going to close up and move on. So item number one of the special call, discussion of local cultivation cannabis tax, page 35 in our practice.
Mayor Garance, for me, to meet March 1st, a public comment period. Public comment was presented regarding the cannabis taxes and situation within the cannabis industry itself and the impact of the falling prices in the oversupply. As such, your council staff put the item on the agenda for discussion. And we have done that for you as the council's aware of the current share of dollars is where good for cultivation, whether it's indoor or hoop house or greenhouse. You're also aware that there are a number of jurisdictions throughout the state that have lowered the taxes in response to the current state cannabis industry. In fact, the state, I believe, maybe today or yesterday produced some legislation to help out the farmers on the state level as well. As you directed, this item is open for discussion. Right now, we've got recommendations regarding the taxes. We're just looking to hear from your council and members of the public so that you can engage in discussion.
Thank you. And is there a recommendation from the staff?
At this point, there isn't. We'd like to hear what the comments are from the general public with the discussion as council. As you're also aware, the county actually suspended collection of the 21 cultivation taxes as in their jurisdiction and then reduced next year's tax levels by 85%. And their tax rates are $1 for outdoor, $2 for mixed bike, and then $3 for indoor. With that, I'm encouraging you to open up the public area and take comments from the community.
Let's do that. Does any, on council have any, does anyone like to make a question beforehand?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I really want to hear from the public on this matter before I render any further discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, if the public has a comment, I'd like to hear it.
Anyone from the public wish to make a comment?
I just wanted, well, I guess I will. So could Kevin Rainey make clarification on the counties what we didn't? What did you say?
Yeah, I believe what they did is they actually reduced next year's 2022 cultivation. No, thank you for.
Can I clarify what the county did? So the county did for 20, for taxes that were due in the year of 2021 of October, they allowed those taxes with no penalties to be pushed out until September of 2022, pay and doable in full. For the year of 2021 cultivation due in 2022, they reduced cultivation by 85%. The cultivators will be responsible for 15% of the cultivation tax. Nothing has been decided for the 2020 year, 2022 year. Okay? That's perfect.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now that's supervisor. And thank you for coming and clarifying. Any other comments?
Yeah, it would just help out a lot if we were able to lower the taxes to be able to, you know, have the industry kind of come back a little bit hopefully. The state is spending a lot of money on eradication without putting the price up a little bit this next year. Time itself. So, yeah, whatever you guys can do on rate from taxes, I would appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
If I may, to the mayor, this is John Schaefer. He is one of the cultivators that funded more than.
It's me.
Thank you.
I guess I should ask you, thank you, Mayor. Sure. I'm Kelly Fodos. I'm with Margaret Advisors. We provide compliance consulting to farmers throughout the whole county and California. And yeah, the situation has been very challenging for cultivators across the state, especially the smaller farmers in our community. And providing a tax relief is really necessary to help them to get started with this tax, with this growing season. And so one of the challenges is if they have a large tax bill due, it's possible that they may have to shut down. It's a pretty significant risk. This is an emerging market and as many folks know, emerging markets, they have these cycles of expand and contract. And so we're in a contraction phase right now. And so the tax relief is really necessary to support the economic development of this particular industry in this area. And so what the supervisors did made a lot of sense. It provided some contribution to continue from those cultivators with that 15%. They're still, you know, participating in the process, but it provided the relief that they needed in order to get their season started and to move forward. One thing I did want to mention is the county had a habit of taxing people based on their permit size, and they were actually sued for that. They have to tax based on the actual cultivation size. So it's very important that the city work with the growers to determine the assessment of actual cultivation size and tax accordingly. And so that's something that we wanted to bring to your attention, especially as these farms get established, they may be permitted for a lot more that they're actually growing, and it's important to that they be taxed appropriately. So we just wanted to provide that, bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So are there any hand raised or emails? No, for emails.
Carter. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So the city manager does have a recommendation. Obviously, this is a discussion item and we can have several options here, which is to continue the meeting to the next regularly scheduled agenda. Certainly no problem with that. Any action that the council would take would need to be re-agendized and brought back in resolution type format for, to, for it to be actionable. What the city manager is really recommending is recognition of the hardship of the, of the cannabis industry, that this city wants to be successful if this is a partnership that we talked about from the very beginning of having revenue come into the city to be able to have a robust police department and a robust roads program to reinvest in the community and also provide a place for cannabis activities to occur. And I think the city's council's done a very good job in terms of really having a diverse set of cannabis businesses, including even within cultivation, we have both indoor and outdoor. So, and let me just step back a second and clarify what we are talking about today for Riedel is, is prospective, future tax levels in the city based on, you know, current levels of, of cultivation. So, so this for us would be affecting the next, the next year and moving forward. So what, you know, we have discussed at a staff level and trying to figure out what the appropriate action should be at this time. The recommendation would be for a one-year prospective reduction of the city of Riedel's cannabis tax rates by 50%. So it would go from $2 square foot down to one. Now, obviously, the council has complete discretion in this matter to adjust that. Matching the county would be 85, roughly 85%. They did have a slightly higher than, than the, than the $2 square foot. And so that is going to be staff's recommendation at this time. And again, there is no rush to do this. And let me also clarify another point. This would be specific to, to non-electrified, you know, hoop houses, the type that are occurring on the Dinsmore Plateau. This would be specific to really the area of the industry that's hurting the most currently, which is not indoor, but it is in fact these either outdoor, which is not allowed in the city, Riedel, or non-electrified greenhouses. So that, again, one-year 50% reduction, electric, non-electrified greenhouse type developments that we see up on the Dinsmore Plateau.
Okay. I guess I might hear from the public and your view of the offer that the recommendation that the city manager has made.
I'm Brandon Rivas. I love property up on this flat up there. Not having the electric supply up there has really put an impact on our product. We have to have enclosed greenhouses, odor control. Not being able to provide this has destroyed my entire crop with mold and it, it, we can't grow what we want to grow up there. And we're still paying a lot of money to try to grow something that we can't even produce. So to have these taxes lowered for us and something like this, like give us an 85%, maybe try to get to the county level and give us a chance to get back on our feet would be great. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John, on the plateau as well. Yeah, the one caveat here is the power issue is a huge deal. And I applied for power about a year ago when I first bought the property and I was informed a couple of months ago from PGE that they don't have any power to give us. And they said that the whole substation has to be upgraded here at Riedel as well as power. Richville has to be brought down. We have to revolve the power lines. And they said that's a two to five year project, you know, and they haven't even started the design phase of it yet. So that puts us in a tight spot, you know, because I, you know, was planning on going commercial and getting power out there. There's no way to really do that, you know? So I don't know if there's any way to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to, you know, send some letter to PGE or do something about the not having any power in town. It seems like it's kind of, you know, civic growth in the industry. As far as the taxes on the square footage, the dollar would be a lot better than two. Appreciate that.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, so when you applied, did PGE tell you that they're going to?
Yeah, they said I would get 400 amps through face. And then I called them two months ago and they said all the power's been relocated to the grow over there on the other side of the river.
To the, to the, or whatever side?
Right. And I did apply.
So they, they miss, they miss this form you were?
That's the usual for PGE.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just asking.
But that's why, that's why I bought the property and spent like $3.5 million now. And that's why I bought the property was because I was told, hey, you're going to have power, you know, it's not going to be an issue. So, you know, I did my homework before I bought the property, you know? Now I'm growing without power, you know, and I have to use generators and, you know, diesel's a $6 a gallon and it's just not, you know? So, and there's nothing you can do if PGE needs a media corporation, you know? You can't even rattle up a branch with them. So I've tried, I've called about 12 people about it. So I've really done my homework and I've really tried to get somebody to say something and everybody, you know, sent me to a different person and they tell me a different story. So I've got about a dozen stories from PGE, you know? So I finally got it down to free flow power. And it's just a real, you know, hassle and waiting two to five years, you know? Industry could completely change in that timeframe, but all my investment money's gone. So that puts us in a bad spot, you know? So I could write a letter and, you know, if you guys could sign it, send it to PGE and ask for some, you know, quick response or some, you know, to try to get it up faster. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And I agree with the recommendation. I just wanted to clarify that there, there is a big difference between running all year and then getting one or two harvests a year if you're lucky. So I think I'll address that already, that this, this doesn't apply across the board. This is only for non-electrified. But yeah, I agree with the idea of a partnership and I want everybody to be successful, including the city. And if we can find a way to continue this partnership and have everybody benefit, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, so if you're cultivating or you're not convinced, unable to, to raise a crop, a successful crop, do, are they, are they charged taxes on, let's say, they just have the land up there, didn't even try to raise a crop? There would be no taxes? Do because there were no crops raised? Is that true?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to sort it all out. So, and then when there is, when they are growing crops and the, the mold takes over, is there, there is some thing in the, in the ordinance that?
There is language in the ordinance that does account for crop loss, but it's incumbent upon the applicant, upon the cultivator to reach out to the city as soon as they recognize that they've got that problem so we could actually document that crop loss.
And so within that framework, then would there be no taxes on that particular part?
The finance director is authorized to take that into account, the taxes. There would be most likely no taxes on that crop loss product.
Um, thank you.
You still have to pay for a state license though. If you don't pay for your state license, it loses that. So maybe you don't cultivate yourself, pay a state license.
Well, they, oh no, I don't understand that. I mean, but. Okay. Are there? No, I was on my way over there. Phone number ending 1703. Okay. Phone number ending 1703, would you like to say something? Feel free to start talking anytime.
Star six to unmute.
Be star six to unmute. Thank you. 1703? Hi. Welcome. All right. My phone number ending in 1703, please unmute your phone and feel free to begin speaking anytime. 808. 1703. Have a date operating. Can I write a note to 1703? This is all my son literally tried. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, they have to. How, uh? Not me. There's noise for us, there's noise, um, to, for us to, I can't find them? No. Thank you. Oh, they have us? Oh.
Okay, so I, sorry, I explained it to her.
No, this works. It works. Yep.
Go ahead, Suzanne. Listen to Suzanne.
You don't have to put it on speaker.
Go ahead, Suzanne. Now she's probably switched. Go ahead. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead. I guess she's having connection.
Oh, yeah, it's sound nice.
Is that my name right?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, so she's standing in through our good lightsers. I understand that 50% reduction toward this year's, or actually last year's taxes might seem like it's very generous, but what I would add to the city council to do is to have a meeting with your farmers who are needing to pay taxes. I think they would be very open with you about their finances. I think Yama was very generous when he said it puts him in a tight spot to understand the implication of them continuing on the plateau with the development that needs to be done to support what they're doing. It's not a place, there's conditions that are promoting this team to that area up there that isn't seeming to be feasible, and there's bonds involved.
Yeah, so she just wanted to bring up the fact that there's, there's still a lot of developing costs in, in these projects. And so part of the concern is that these funds will be pulled out of that development to make these projects viable. And I think that was the main point that she wanted to bring up. And so having these discussions with the farmers, you know, directly would provide some more insight into the situation. I think that was my thing. Sorry. So, you know, I'm going to actually.
Oh, that's absolutely what I want to say. I think with the farmers directly to understand exactly what this year's master plan looks like and what's in front of them.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Sorry.
No, no, I'm glad you did that. All right. So, thank you. Now, so from the council perspective, we have a discussion, do we want to move it forward? Do, and have further discussion, do we want to move the staff recommendation of a one-year moratorium and reduce the, reduce the tax to $1 per square foot?
Just to clarify, is it, it would be a one-year reduction?
A one-year reduction, I'm sorry. Thank you. We need to talk and think about it. Carl, when would this begin? What, is this something that would happen this quarter, something that would happen next quarter? When exactly are we talking?
The taxes would be for the 2022 growing season.
Calendar year or just?
It's for the growing season, but they were allowed to make quarterly payments if they like.
Okay.
So it would be, that, it starts in July 1st of this year.
2022?
Yeah.
That's when the reduction in taxes would happen. So.
Well, I, I'll go out on a limb a little bit. I don't want to see failure by these businesses. And I, I don't think the City of Riedel is going to fail if we get something less than a dollar. Flowers may fail if they have to pay a dollar. My recommendation would be that we accept a one-year payment of 50 cents a square foot. On the theory that something is all on there, absolutely nothing. But I'm getting, I don't want to turn this into a, whatever it was once before, but the, I think there's a, there's a real prospect that this is a downhill slope. And this industry is over, is saturated. It'll continue to be saturated. The illegal grows did not cease as they were supposed to. Whoever's fault that is can be their fault. But the reality is, gas is six bucks a gallon, and it's going to go up. And the same side, the same thing is that the market of cannabis, there's going to be more of it, and there's going to be, continue to be illegal, and it's going to be less profitable. And so if this, if this works for you, and makes you feel good to put in a 50 cents a, a square foot, fine. My take is that it's going to continue to decline. And I've used the example a couple of times, that it's two dogs fighting over a bone with no meat on. This is, this is a downhill slope. And it's unfortunate for both the city and for the people that have invested, as you said, sir, put a lot, a lot of money into this, to try to be legal. And I want to respect the people that have tried to be legal versus the ones that just kind of sort of stuff it and didn't try to do that. And so I respect it for, for trying to do it right. I'm just sorry to say it's a, a definite thing, but if the city can help you, I think we need to make an effort to help. So I, I'll agree with Mr. Gordon, I'm Mr. Johnson.
I, I'll agree with Councilmember Johnson also, just because when we look at this article and some of the other counties and what they've done, there's only one that said 50%. A lot of them have gone more than that. So I'll just go on that basis.
Well, just be unanimous, because that's the kind of council we are. We're a happy group, giving a chance for everybody, and we will definitely, we will do it here.
And we will, so we will have to bring back an item to normalize the council's correction. Now we'll have the specific language. It does, it does say that, it's just for a one-year. Yeah, so staffs can, if I may, with the maker of the motions permission, they just put it at 50 cents per square foot, one-year prospective.
Natural light, is that what?
Natural light, no electricity, yeah. Des Moines Plateau.
That's a motion. Do we need a, do a motion? Okay.
So.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Is that a motion?
I think that was the.
I mean, we'll carry your recommendation for staff to grab that into the form.
Drop, yeah.
Right.
We'll bring back our resolution.
Okay, we, this is a direction.
This is a direction. This is a direction for a future, a future initiative of the forms.
Okay, perfect. And I hope that works out with everybody, with everybody getting faced with that. And so we will. We'll close that item and move on to potential, potential use of CBD, CDVG program income and supplemental activities. Page 41 in the packet.
Mayor Burns, members of the council, this has to do with our program income that's generated through our CDVG program, which is our community fellow, block grant program. The city, over the years, has loaned money to its residents for primarily owner-occupied rehabilitation, remodels of the residences, and that money paid back to the city typically at the time of sale of the property. On this one, we have approximately $500,000. Actually, we have, from what I understand, almost $550,000. This money has to be encumbered by June 30th of this year, or it goes back to HCD, and they will redistribute it. So we reached out to staff from HCD. We actually had a Zoom meeting today with our overrepresented and one of their financial specialists, and we talked about potential uses of that money. And there is a list that starts on page 43 of your packet that identifies six potential supplemental activities that we can, that we can ultimately be able to use. We do have to jump through some hoops. One of the hoops is, although we were somewhat surprised, we do not qualify as a LMI community, low to moderate income community. We thought we would under the new census information. HCD relies on head information, and the head information uses the American Community Survey, likely 2015 through 2018, and then that in combination with some census information. We are just under that threshold to qualify. So in order to tap any of these projects, and I will go through them real quickly, we would have to do an income survey. Number one on the list is the acquisition of Todd property. As the council's aware, Todd property is a 28th parcel down here at the intersection of Davis Street and Iowa 111. It is the prime piece of commercial property in the city. As the council is probably also aware, or those who remember, we were awarded $225,000 in SB 2 funds and FED funds to do a conceptual mixed-use project out there, and that included that in design for some technical studies and then some approval plans as well. What we were trying to do is acquire site control before we actually pulled the trigger, I'm sorry, to extend those funds. Unfortunately, because recently brought to our attention, the CalFire is looking, is looking at purchasing that property to relocate their facility from Fortuna down here to Riedel. Of course, that is not in the best interest of the city. So we thought one of the uses we could do with this money is to supplement our offer to Mrs. Todd, try to acquire that property. The door hasn't shut on that opportunity. There are some hoops you would have to jump through. And we hope to go through some CDVG information, the census, like this afternoon. We don't exactly what we have to do, but that is number one on our list. The list actually references the matrix codes, which are basically codes they identify activities that are allowed activities for substantial income. The next project, which is on page 44 of your packet, is downtown sidewalks and tree plantings. There was a matrix code, three L's allows for that, and that basically allowed lots to repair the sidewalks and possibly some tree plantings of downtown area. Again, it all comes back to the LMI designation and a potential made for an income survey. The third one was the Eagle Prairie Professional Building, the potential relocate, the Community Resource Center, it's down on Wildwood Avenue and Monument Road to that building. It's been for sale for probably almost a year now. It does need some improvements, it does need some rehabilitation. So that was one of the uses we identified. 203 Wildwood, that is the property that's immediately south of the city parking lot that currently has a small rental unit on it. Council considered that acquisition some time ago and decided not to pursue it at that time. These funds could be used for that project as well. Again, comes back to this income survey, which looks like we're obligated to do, we want to tap any of these resources. And the next project was the Enos Community Forest, Community Park. That too is allowable activity using program income money. And then the final one, which may be probably the most promising project of them all, would be the Bellevue Oval Drainage Improvements. As the council's aware, Red Church Engineering is currently preparing improvement plans for that project out there. That one would be a little easier because we've got a confined neighborhood up there where we could hopefully identify that as a low to moderate income area and tap those funds much easier from a can on these other projects. So that's what we're looking into right now. Although it's not exactly what we wanted to hear from you today. And like I said, the door hasn't shut, and we're going to explore every possibility we can, so we don't have to return these money to the state. That, I'll turn the city manager's seat test. Any other information you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, I think Kevin pretty much hit, covered all the bases on this. The MHI issue continues to bedevil some of our projects in the city, being that we're kind of right on the cusp, right on the middle. And so from year to year, we may be able to qualify for community-wide programs and other years we don't. And that's, you know, really unfortunate that we're, we're kind of put in that position, because I don't think it's warranted, but it is, the way that the formula works of each different agency has, has pretty much its own unique formula. We're fortunate, at least on the water side, to not encounter issues like this related to grants and use of state funding. But it's, Kevin stated earlier, the Bellevue Oval Drainage Improvements, this has been a project that actually, from its most recent inception, was initially started using CDVG funding for the initial plans by Red Church. Suddenly, that was, I forget the amount of the grant from CDVG, but that is what got us to the plans, to the broader plans or initiation. So it does make a lot of sense that the CDVG funds have been used to blaze a path, to fix the drainage issues out there. And we think that that's an appropriate use. Neighborhood itself is relatively small, should be an attainable process to do a specific MHI study out there relatively quickly. And like I said, we're getting very close to having shovel-ready documents ready to go out to bid for that project. So our recommendation really would be the, to pursue the Bellevue Oval Drainage Improvements at this time.
Thank you, city manager. And for all the other ones, with the exception of the Bellevue, it would actually have to be the entire city that you'd have to do the, the HM.
It's similar, because it's based on our compensation at HCD. And ultimately, we probably want to cross that bridge, because I think if we did do the income survey, when I came to work here back in 2013, we were not designated as an MHI community. And we did an income survey, the survey demonstrated that we were in fact an MHI community. And so I think ultimately, we will probably cross that bridge and do a city-wide one for right now, because times of the.
Times of the year.
We've just got a few months.
Right, so the whole city now would be pretty daunting.
Yeah, so I think if we focus our efforts on the Bellevue Oval neighborhood, that's one that I think is a deal.
And the Bellevue Oval, what we will be doing if we did that? We will be fixing the thing that kept us from completing that, that street?
So there, there are three deficiencies on that end of Oval Avenue. One is the sewer lines, one is, or potentially the sewer lines, the SCS is still underway, but definitely the water lines. So the grant that we are pursuing through the state of California has that identified as a line replacement issue. There, there is this third issue, which all jurisdictions have problems with, which is stormwater. And there's really no funding mechanism for it, other than when developments go in. And unfortunately, that entire development was slowly pieced together without any kind of really robust and adequate drainage solution to it. So, I can't remember.
Oh, I, I, I was just saying that that was, what we would be doing with, and, and park, fixing the problem that precluded us from fixing this street.
It, it solves one of those components. It solves the stormwater issue. It, it, I'm not going to say it's 100% solves the stormwater issue, but it significantly eliminates the flooding in the backyards of people in that, in that neighborhood. It also potentially has some benefits in terms of I&amp;I, which is overflow infiltration into the sewer system, because it, you know, might lower the water table just slightly enough that there's less pressure on the pipes. that there's less pressure on the pipes, less seepage into the pipes. Um, so, so there are added, added benefits to it, but we would really, based on the current direction that we have from the council, which is we're trying our best to avoid paving roads and then having to dig them up. Um, that is a road that we do project with this project and with, at least the water, uh, city project, we would absolutely have to be ripping up.
Right.
The, the southern portion of Ogle, um, we're reasonably sure that we don't have to do, um, to do that. So that, that's, that's why that was prioritized, that spring infirm, or, uh, spring river, river streets, uh, why those are, why those are paved, so. But it does, it gets us to a necessary step, and we're actually paved it. And really, the biggest killer to asphalt paving is water, so standing water. And you see that all throughout town, the worst spots are where water, uh, pools. Uh, and, uh, that's been a longstanding issue correcting the drainage issues in these various neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I agree with, uh, Kyle's recommendation.
Councilmember Carter?
We wouldn't have to do a study with that, maybe just say nothing.
Just a small one for that specific area.
One more question. What is our, what do they consider our housing income? Be, uh, for Riedel?
I want to say, I think the threshold is forty-eight thousand. Don't quote me on that, but I think it's close to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Um, I can circle this one anyway, so, um, yeah, this is important stuff. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Mayor Proctor?
Thank you, Mayor Gornes. Uh, Sabrina and I talked to Councilmember Woodall in the hospital, and I told her that my recommendation would be to table this item until our next meeting so that she could be part of the, and decision-making, part of the, this, this discussion. So, yeah, are we in any hurry?
Probably not, it's just a ton, a ton set of.
We're, we're a little bit in a, in a time crunch, um, we're a little bit in a time crunch, uh, with two weeks, sync it, no. But two weeks is two weeks.
Yeah, that would, that would be my recommendation, I would table for two weeks, or three weeks.
Joy Carter? No, thank you, no, no, I appreciate that, yeah, exactly, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. So, um, I will ask, um, is there anyone to the public who would like something? Are there any, no, are there any hands raised? Are there any emails? You don't like this, no. Okay, is there a motion then to direct staff to, to motion thing, to, um, move forward with item number six? So, Carter, we have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second, we go. Motion carries four, zero, three, enough, okay, it was like, did we have four lines?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, James, so eight percent.
Three one or two zero?
Three zero, three one, three one.
That's it.
Thanks, um, I think we are down to council reports. Mayor Proctor?
Thank you, Mayor Gornes. The last chance, great various committees, uh, met on Zoom on the second of this month, and Caltrans and the consultants laid out kind of the direction that we're going. Uh, there's been some modest revisions to the tentative plans or preliminary plans that they have for both the two alignments that exist. Uh, alignment number X or letter X is a, in, in the existing right-of-way, uh, traditional cuts, fills a whole bunch of, uh, retaining walls and a whole bunch of millions of dollars worth of drainage, to the extent that they would be sinking thirty-foot diameter caissons and regularly drilling out from those to try to capture water. Uh, there would be retreats, a couple retreats in the hillside with huge retaining walls. Uh, those retreats would be fifty to a hundred feet. Uh, contrary to state figures that the Brad and Riedel, uh, impact statement will be ready in twenty-three, final environmental statement two years later, beginning of construction twenty-thirty. We should all live so long. One of the things that Caltrans and the consultant are doing is they're planning to bring on a bona fide contractor during the design work. And the advantage of this is, uh, Caltrans will then find out really what is buildable, what is the best method of building, what is the cheapest method of building. That would give us the products that we want, that is a long-term product. Uh, the other alternative, alternative F, which is a tunnel, basically it's, for the most part of the alignment, it's two tunnels, uh, parallel adjacent to each other with cross connections, uh, every several hundred feet. Um, the, there are some problems with, with that, and they have determined through the geotechnical warnings that, uh, the south end or the south portal, they're gonna have to drop the elevation approximately twenty feet to get out of some, uh, material that's not very stable. And at the north end, they completed a tree survey because the tunnel will come out of the ground and then it goes through Ogle Trail of Forest, big trees. And by changing the horizontal alignment from a thousand-foot horizontal curve to an eight-hundred-foot horizontal curve, they can miss a number of these trees, and that's kind of like the, the current plan. The next meeting is probably gonna be this summer. Uh, it's trudging forward and, uh, you know, we should all live to see, to drive on it. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
That's me. Um, let's see, about a week and a half ago, we did a write-along with our community services officer, Mary Clark. It was really informative and nice to see kind of a day in the life of what that job is like. Um, I just want, I know she's not here, I'm gonna say she's doing a really good job, and I, I think she has a big and sometimes hard-to-find job title, so, uh, so yes, it seems like she's working real hard, and it was, uh, it was nice to see what she does. Um, and then lastly, we have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow at three P M. Is that a person?
It's in person.
It is in person, so it'll be right here. Um, if anybody here or listening would like to attend that meeting, we'll be here at three. And that's it, thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Wilson?
That all I have is, we have an HWA meeting, and one of the topics on the list is the CRV. They wanted, the leader actually wanted to break CRV, possibly back to HWA doing it, where they abandoned it. Now the local, this outfit out of Pembro, out of Crescent City, has got the coastal commission to approve it, and they work on the city of Arcata, to, to bring this place, apparently sounds positive, that it's gonna work, they're, they're optimistically hoping the first eight, twelve, which is the whole prep, is what they said too, so. But anyway, it looks like it's a, something the HWA will have to take, try to take on. And, uh, possibly the city of Arcata will have a place for all your cans, bottles, and plastic bottles. But, yeah, this is a comment, you shouldn't be buying plastic bottles. And you should be putting them in wall walls, and you fill them up. You.
I knew that was not be used.
But, uh, one of the things that, that we do with, and, and the other part of the HWA talking about giving up their recycling centers so they can put the thirteen eighty-three, which is giving organic food waste, which you're gonna deal, uh, somehow. And so, the, obviously, the, the, doing stuff that ends up in landfill, I don't know. How you do that other than we change our lifestyle, you know, don't buy things that, that, that end up in landfill? Because most of your recycled stuff now, probably ninety percent of it is going to landfilling because nobody wants that recycled stuff with chopper rotation. So that's, even if you put it in your recycle bin, somehow it ends up in landfill. So, it is, that's all I have.
Thank you. And, um, first I would like to just, um, wish our council member well. Speed recovery and the best of health, and for husband as well, hope that both are on the road to recovery. And we miss them, we miss Julie and up here. And, um, I have a, we have a California city business meeting on the twenty-fifth in Nikaya. And I was, um, confirmed by the full senate yesterday for the seismic safety commission, um, officially, um, official seismic safety commissioner for the state of California. So, yeah. And, um, that's, that's all, oh, and there's a tsunami drill on Saturday, March nineteenth. Um, they can use volunteers, if, if anyone wants to volunteer, um, um, that would be, I'm sure they would really be happy about it. Because of my foot, I can't volunteer, but I am going to be at the command center observing. Um, so that will go from eight-thirty is when they need it till eleven-thirty. So if you hear sirens, if, if there's anything on the horizon, like some kind of warning from somewhere else, they will cancel the drill, so it will be real. But it will be a drill, it will be announced as a drill, so if you're in Rico or somewhere where tsunami sirens sound, um, there is a drill that's going to happen this, the Saturday the nineteenth. Um, so, and again, if anyone wants to volunteer, they will be happy to have you volunteer.
Who, who, who is H E O's?
The city office, okay. Um, yeah, the office emergency services, um, the national, the weather, the, um, guy, Ryan, the, that's, um, Lily Island. And, um, so you can contact them. If you want to volunteer, email me, I'll email you or text me, I will email you the information about who to contact and with their contact information.
It, it's Ryan Derby from the U S.
Okay.
And tsunami week.
And the tsunami. That's tsunami week.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you get a hold of it. So anyway, um, so those are my hallway announcements, and, um, I thank everyone, I thank everyone for being here and everybody who's watching and participating, and we will adjourn, and, um, is there a motion adjourn?
Soon.
Second, we have a motion in the second, we will adjourn until, uh, April fifth, April fifth at six-thirty.
Thank you, everyone.